Call this meeting order, shall we rise and pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to the meeting. If you would, if you have a cell phone, would you please silence it? First on the agenda is our minutes. We have three sets of minutes. We have the one from our last month's meeting, we have the one from our special meeting, we have one from last month's, uh, drainage board meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the previous minutes, all three.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of the last three meetings, the one special and the drainage board in our regular meeting. Is there discussion? All those in favor who've signed and signed by saying aye?
Aye.
Three ayes. Partner reports, Mr. Coram.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Got all the guys this morning adjusting their chains on their boxes and great for the next storm to come in. We mixed about 200 tons of salt sand last Friday. It left us about 50 tons in the barn of straight salt. We got another 200 coming in today of straight salt. Roughly, we probably got 750, or 650, about 700 ton of salt sand, so we're in good shape. They're not just waiting on the storm right now.
What's the prediction?
Ah, one to two, I think, well, I've been saying this morning, so it could change.
No ice?
I ain't seeing nothing yet on ice.
It'd have to warm up a lot to get ice.
Huh?
It'd have to warm up a lot to get ice.
It all seems, so, that's it.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Hey, Richard. I went down to the highway garage and talked to them guys. I guess that floor's not draining so well.
Yeah, we're trying to have some issues with that. We, uh, Zane, or not Zane, but Randy Zens, or what, Zane Zens or something, he's supposed to, the contractor, he's supposed to come down here, he was supposed to have came down Friday. Kinda hoping he'll come in again, but come in today. I'm gonna retry and call him again, see what we can come up with. But where they cut the seams in the concrete, they went all the way across the floor, it goes underneath the offices, so when we got the truck in there, or any kind of water, it's all gonna go into the shop.
I just wanna make sure the contractor was gonna...
Yeah, he was supposed to have came down Friday, but he never did. I'll give him another shout out, and he's over here, usually on that bank, so...
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Yep.
Who agree?
So he's waiting for a tech, he just texted me.
Okay. Michael, you wanna go ahead?
You know, my whole lot on my part. The jail control system went down over the weekend. Called Stanley Integrator, which is the company that made the system. And they can't send a tech, and they gotta work, and then it broke down again last night, but as of this morning, it was working, as of 2:00 a.m., so... We'll keep a watch on it. It looks like it was just a flub in the system somewhere. It wasn't anything somebody had done to cause that. But they're gonna look into it and see if the contractor that installed it might not have completed something, so they're gonna let us know.
So, you say Stanley did, or did not send someone down?
They did.
Okay.
Yeah. He was here yesterday morning, or early afternoon, got it working, and then about three hours later, it went down again. So he came back last night, he got here about 11:00, 11:30. So... But it is working, was working as of this morning, still is.
Is it gonna be a recurring problem?
I hope not. I'm crossing my fingers, but I've never, I don't know why it did what it did, so there's no real rhyme or reason that I can see of why it had the failure it did. So... That's it for me, you guys have anything you need for me?
No.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you. Chief Deputy Jones? It says sheriff, you don't look like you do.
No, thank goodness. Speaking of what Michael was talking about, the computer system went down Saturday morning. I got a phone call, and when you have to go to keys in the jail, it's a nightmare, but they did it for the morning. We're supposed to have remote access with the upgrade that we got, and for some reason, when I called them that morning, they said we didn't have it. Hopefully, that's getting worked out, I guess, and that's supposed to be up and running, supposedly, right now. So we'll see. And they could've fixed it remotely if that was working, but it was never hooked up when the upgrade was installed. Joey had already come over and talked to you guys about this. Just need to get two employees approved. Zach Muston, he started last week as a jail officer. I think you guys already approved that. Seems to be doing excellent. He is working second shift right now. I think he's got a career in law enforcement. He's in the DNR process right now, so we may not have him very long, but he's gonna be a good asset for us. And then Amy Ott is the other application that you guys have. She's a nurse, part-time, with Jennifer Counselor. She's leaving us. We've only got one nurse right now, and when they're doing part-time... The nurse we have now, David Hornsby, he works for Muggers, and he's doing that full-time, and he's trying to do both full-time now, so... Amy Ott works at Rush Memorial, and Joey spoke to her two weeks ago, and he seems to think that she'll do an excellent job, and she's came in, and David's walked her around and showed her what she needs to do, so... I'm not sure when she's supposed to start. It should be soon, but we just need to get that approved also.
Any questions?
No. Do you need a motion to approve these?
Please.
I make a motion we approve Amy and Zachary.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve both Amy Ott and Zachary Muston. One for nurse, and the other for jail officer, respectively. Is there any discussion? All those in favor who've signed and signed by saying aye?
Aye.
Three ayes. Thank you, good choices. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Michelle? Our means on the 26th, right?
Sixty-six.
At 10.
I just need to get approval to hire Craig Hamilton, part-time, as the Sunday supervisor on the, for the work crew.
I'm going to vote for this on the condition to tell him I smiled the whole time I was looking at his application.
We'll do that.
I know this officer, he's a very, very good officer. He'll work well with Michelle over there.
Motion to approve Craig Hamilton for CRS supervisor, Sunday.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve Craig Hamilton as CSR supervisor, is there any discussion? All those in favor who've signed and signed by saying aye?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. County attorney?
Thank you. I don't have anything to present right now besides my approval of the maintenance agreement, 911 Department. I don't have anything else to present unless you guys have a question or issue that I need to address right now.
Nothing I'm aware of. Okay, Terry? I'm sorry, I forgot you, I looked right at you. It's not written down, I don't remember.
I think it's a new business.
I have the VIA agreement that Mr. Appel was talking about. I gave you guys a copy of it at the last meeting. I did not bring another copy of it today. It is basically for the support of, through VIA, for the 2016 year. This is needed for the upgrade with our CAT system of Spilma, and then those department heads are gonna see if those services are still needed for 2017, but we wanna keep them with this upgrade with that.
And this contract is strictly between you, 911, excuse me, 911 and VIA?
This particular one that you will be signing is strictly for Baytown County 911. The Sheriff's Department and the Police Department, we will all three be paying a third of it, but the one that I'm having to approve is my portion of it, not the Sheriff's Department. So, but they'll have the same, they'll have the same contract.
Zach, the maintenance fees that were approved in this year's budget for the Sheriff's Department, is this covered under that?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so this isn't anything additional?
No.
Okay, alright. Okay, and so, we know it'll be covered by the Sheriff's Department, and you've got your part covered out of your budget, and the city will pay, so, anything else? Does anyone have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion, if you're so disposed.
I make a motion that we approve this contract with VIA for 911.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the, uh, contract with 911, the vertical integrated associates, I believe. And what's the total amount?
Total amount's $1,680.
$1,680. Any discussion? All those in favor who've signed and signed by saying aye?
Aye.
Three ayes.
And also at the last meeting, there was a, you guys tabled, I requested the holidays being changed for the 24/7.
I'm gonna bring that, I'm gonna bring it up in just a minute.
Okay.
Okay, if you don't mind.
I'll leave this.
Council representative, I don't think I just saw him or her. Probation? Okay. Do we have any mail? Okay. Any old business? I guess I should say that I met with, just as a matter of form, I met with our Verizon representative last week, I believe it was. The county, due to some rate reductions, stands to save about $1,800 a year, which was a month, but it's not, $1,800 a year. Some of that savings will be reduced because we have to have a phone for one of our department heads, but we will still see a significant savings. Okay, new business, highway maintenance bids. We have received these. They were advertised for the 19th. This is a redo because of a mistake on our part, which, again, we apologize for. So, I'm going to give one...
Is this all right here?
Yes.
I'm gonna call, before we even open these, I'm gonna call these out, so if there are any representatives here who you've submitted yours, I wanna make sure they're here. Okay, Asphalt Materials Incorporated, Terry Asphalt Materials Incorporated, Harvest Land Co-op.
Yeah.
New Point Stone Company Incorporated. And I'm not sure if this is one or not. CPI Bridge. I've opened one, so, but I haven't opened it completely.
Is there any more of that?
I'm sorry?
Is there any more of that Marathon Petroleum?
Who was it?
Marathon Petroleum.
Marathon Petroleum?
Yeah.
CGS Services?
Who did you deliver him to?
Oh, the ones I had down at the shop.
Okay. I'm sorry?
I put it in the mailbox, the black mailbox. Up here, no, but the highway garage. That's the one I brought in this morning. That's just shipping here too.
We'll recess till we find it.
Okay, we're gonna recess for a few minutes till we see...
I have one in my hand.
Okay, but, and you, sir?
CGS Services. I did not turn in the new one, just the original.
Okay. The only one I have...
These were in a different stack, I'm sorry.
Okay. Sorry about that.
If we find them all, then we need to go back to your office.
Well, I don't know. CGS and Marathon.
And here's CPI over here. Do you need to go to your office and get those old ones out?
No, they're right here.
Okay.
Let's open what we have, and then we'll call them out again, okay? Open what you have, keep them separate. And you were with St. Regis?
CGS.
St. Regis.
CGS.
How do you not find that? Not from, not from the original, I've got CivilCon. Okay, let me read off of what you have.
I have CPI Bridge.
I have Terry Asphalt and Asphalt Materials. I have New Point Stone, St. Regis, Marathon, Irving Brothers, Harvest Land. City had an original, so we have to recess. Next, St. Regis bid. And so, CPI Bridge. Okay, we're gonna recess until we can see we can find yours, but I have no idea where it is, because everything was kept together. We stand in recess. Put this session back to order, as much as it can be. I do apologize for the problem. Now, again, I'm gonna read these to make sure that I haven't missed anybody. CGS, CPI Bridge, Terry Asphalt Materials, Asphalt Materials Inc. out of Indy, New Point Stone Company Inc. out of Greensburg, St. Regis out of Indianapolis, Marathon Petroleum out of Indianapolis, same thing. Same thing. Irving Materials Incorporated, and Country Mark. Have I missed anybody? Okay, we're going to recess, and our highway supervisor and our attorney and all of us will determine on these. We'll be right here in the room, so please make yourselves comfortable. We stand in recess. Call this meeting back to order. We have, to use a big word, we have a conundrum. St. Regis and CPI. Your figures, to the penny on everything, are the exact same. I've never seen that before, but literally, everything that we looked at, and we looked at several pages, the quotes are, to the penny, exactly the same. So... Who are the representative for St. Regis and CPI? They're not here.
Let's have recess.
Yeah. I've done plenty enough of recess, okay? I really think the only fair way to do this is toss a coin. I don't, I mean, we can't, we can't choose if one's lower or one's better. We're talking about comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges. Having said that, before we get to that, after reviewing the prices up here on the quotes, Country, excuse me. Country Mark was the only one that submitted for...
Fuel.
Fuel. Okay. In the category of gravel were IMI, CGS, and New Point. Okay? IMI had the lowest overall quotes. On oil, there were Marathon, Terry, and Asphalt Materials. Terry was the one with the lowest overall quotes. On culverts, that's what I'm just talking about, there was St. Regis, CPI, and CivilCon. Does the body or the board have another recommendation? I really don't, I really don't know. And you say we've done business with St. Regis?
Yeah. Every one of them are great companies. I mean, I will put that out there.
Well, to the county attorney, is it legal to flip a coin?
I've never seen this happen before, again.
If I may?
Yes.
In the past, I've seen it happen three times. All three times, they flipped a coin, but both parties involved were there.
Well...
Yeah, you can't accept both bids and then flip a coin afterwards.
No. No. Well, I'm going to, unless the board overrides me, I'm gonna make the decision, we'll flip a coin. Okay? Marion, you're a dissent interest in party. I'm going to flip it up in the air, and, uh, I'll go ahead and assign it this way. Head for St. Regis, tails for CPI. Does anybody have a coin? I've got a debit card, it definitely won't work.
I don't make enough for any of them.
I've got a coin, if you can wait a minute. I gotta go to my office and get it.
There's a four.
Everybody, here's your four.
I had a Morgan Silver Dollar in my hands. You want that?
Okay.
Let me see if it's got a head and a tail on it.
Tail?
Okay.
Or you want this one?
No. Okay.
Want Marion to flip it?
I'm going to flip it, and Marion, you call it, okay?
Alright.
It is a tail.
Okay. Word goes to CPI.
Oh!
Now we know why you didn't make it with reds. Okay. Is the board satisfied with our decision?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any questions from the vendors here? The gentlemen who bid? Okay, so the, uh, stands at Country Mark, Terry Products, and it was tails, correct?
CPI.
Tails goes to CPI. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to accept these.
I make a motion to accept the bids, as we've discussed.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor who've signed and signed by saying aye?
Aye.
Three ayes. Thank God and Greyhound, that's gone. Okay. Ms. Bennett, you wanted to talk about the holiday schedule? I actually have that with me, but I don't, I don't, unless the body wants to do something different, okay? I have, we tabled this till our January 19th meeting. I don't think we can do this for you and not do it for the other two emergency services.
Okay, I know Michelle's on board with it.
Community Corrections and the Sheriff's Department. So what I'm gonna suggest is the three department heads get together, plus one of the commissioners, because I wanna be fair to everybody, and just having this presented, I know you've worked it out, but I wanna make sure, number one, it doesn't interfere with our handbook, okay? And number two, that, uh, it's fair to everybody, okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, having said that, would you wanna be on the committee? I will appoint Commissioner Mador, okay? I'll leave it up to the two of you to get together, and if you will be kind enough to contact the other department heads and let them know, and then we'll go that way.
Okay. That sounds fine.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
We have one other action in our new business. We need to, all of our current appointments from last year carry over until July 1st of this year. But we do need to appoint Adrian Ellis from the Emergency Management Agency to our 911 Advisory Board. So, given that, I will entertain a motion to that effect.
I make a motion to point Adrian Ellis to the 911 Advisory Board.
Second.
Motion in a second to appoint Adrian Ellis to 911 Advisory Board. Is there any discussion? All those in favor who've signed and signed by saying aye?
Aye.
Three ayes. David, I almost forgot you again, I apologize.
It's alright.
Mr. Rickman from our animal shelter.
I've got some quotes here, working on our kennels. Only had two people that showed up.
That's fine.
And I got copies for you. And I've got copies for you. No, I need to talk to you before you go.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, this is for work to repair the, or replace some fencing on the outside kennels?
Yes.
Is it for all of the fencing?
It's for most of them.
Most of them, okay.
Yeah, the ones that's lightweight, and the ones that's tore up on them. And we got one frame that's gonna have to be replaced on one of our kennels. And for, some of the ones that's got tore up are the lightweight wires, we're going with the heavier one this time around. And the bottom, where dogs try to get out, you know, where it's aluminum wire to hold it, instead of putting that on there, we're gonna put like the heavier clamps on it, so that'll help on, kinda limit that where the wires get torn up so much.
On these, on these two quotes, you've read them, correct?
Yeah.
We're comparing apples to apples?
Yeah, I had both come out, and I told them what I wanted and everything, and Paddock, his quote was 761. And Indiana wire?
960.
Was 960. I explained to.
I'm sorry?
I explained to them what I would like to have and all that, and it's the same thing. And that's what they came up with.
And this is coming out of your donated money, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
No.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the fencing estimate and proposal by fencing by Paddock for Connersville, Indiana for $761 even.
I second the motion.
I have a motion in a second to accept the proposal from fences by Paddock for $761 Is there any discussion? All those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Three ayes. And you have your December 2015 report, which...
Did you, did you say you redid this? This is the old form, right?
This is still the old form. I just redid it in January.
On the new form, are you gonna have, how many animals you adopted out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I am. You know, in December, we had 48 animals total. We ended up putting six of them, and most of them was barrel cats. We adopted out 30 animals, and that left 12 on hand for the month of December. Our adoptions are doing, still doing pretty good, and we're hoping that people keep on, one day animals come up and see us and try to keep it going, so we don't have to euthanize any of them, and that we don't have to.
Do you still have volunteers that are helping with the Facebook and that?
Yes, I do, I have.
And who are they?
The main one I have is Jerry Sparks. She comes up, I recall her, to get pictures taken, better than what I can do on the camera. She's better at it than I am. She come up and takes pictures for us.
Okay, I would personally like to thank Jerry Sparks and Benny and all others who helped with the animal shelter. The goal of these commissioners, all three of us, is to minimize the euthanasia of animals as much as we possibly can, and to do that, we have to basically advertise for the animals that are there, what they look like, and et cetera, and the people and the volunteers who help us, their help is very much appreciated.
Right. And, you know, we got, and I'd like to also thank a couple other places here. We got Tractor Supplies, they called us up, and they were the ones to come for a few hours on the weekend, where we take some animals with us and see if they can get adopted. And Miller's Tobacco, a couple weeks ago, we got six animals adopted out.
Super.
You know, I had one that came back, cause it wasn't good with cats, but it's still a good dog, you know, and, you know, and I'd like to thank them too for helping us out with that and that thing. That's all I have at this time.
Alright, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
The patron concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, board. Marion Dowrampf, Orange Township trustee. Last week, we had a family lose their home there in the Orange Township, and I just wanted the community to know that there has been a donation fund set up for them at the Wells Fargo Bank out of Rushville. If anyone would like to donate, their house was completely consumed and everything in it. They had a chimney fire, and thank goodness that they all got out alive, but it was the Wyndhurst family in Orange.
And so the spelling would be W-Y-N-D-H-U-R-S-T?
No, W-I-N-D-H-O-R-S-T.
H-O-R-S-T, okay.
W-I-N.
And the Wells Fargo Bank, that's on three, just north of downtown Rushville, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
And can they make donations anyplace else, or just?
I am not sure about that. I just know that they have that, they have that fund set up there for them. And I don't know any more than that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marion.
Anything else? Okay, if not, I'll entertain an approval for the claims and payroll with one correction under service contracts. The Gordon Food Service, that's in Commissioner Service Contracts 30970, that's, I already spoke with Terry, that's gonna go into the Jails Food Budget, taken from the Jails Food Budget at 30070. With that one correction, is there a motion to accept the claims and payroll?
Yes, motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to accept the claims and payroll with the exception noted. Is there any discussion? All those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Three ayes. Nothing else to come forward, the board? I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to adjourn. Is there any discussion? All those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Three ayes, we are adjourned.